Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for June 28th, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the attendance?
Mr. Carter, Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the first thing on our agenda tonight is item 2A, which is our COVID-19 update. And as of July 6th, we will be reopening City Hall from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So just in a few days from now, we're looking forward to that. We've been open nine to one, and we've figured out everything we need to do to be back in business post-COVID. In Skagit County, we right now have 69.8% of 100,000 of our population over the last 14 days has had COVID. And hospitalization rates are 4.6 patients per 100,000 over the last seven days. We've had, since March of 2020, we've had 5,332 cases. We've had 76 deaths, and two of those are brand-new deaths in the last week. And we've hospitalized a total of 354 people due to the COVID pandemic. In Washington State, we've had 451,000 cases and 5,911 deaths. As far as vaccinations go, we've had a total in this county of 147,289 vaccine doses have been administered, and that's roughly 61% of all Skagit residents 12 years and older. I believe a couple of weeks ago, I reported a higher percentage, but it did not include to age 12. And those folks have been at least partially vaccinated, so 61% of our county have received at least one vaccine. In the state, as of yesterday, we are at 68.1% of the total state has received at least one vaccination. Governor Isley held a press conference and announced the state will be fully reopening on June 30th, allowing businesses to get back to normal. And there's much to be navigated there. There'll still be some masking required, and so more news to come on that. I urge all businesses to lean on Department of Labor and Industry and Employment Security to have the right policies in place as you reopen. Following the closure of the fairgrounds for the public health where they were doing testing and vaccination, they now have converted to a pop-up model. And the next pop-up site will be on June 30th in the Skagit Transit Station in downtown Mount Vernon from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Also on June 30th, which is just two days away, Chucking Up Brewery in Burlington will be doing it from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So I think they call that a pint in a poke. On July 3rd, Big Lake, that's their 3rd of July festival, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Big Lake Elementary. July 7th, the Marble Mountains Community Hall from 3:00 to 7:00. July 13th, the Skagit Valley Family YMCA. And July 24th, the Clear Lake Fire Department from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And that concludes my report today on the COVID-19. I would, since I'm speaking at this moment, I just want to update you. Remind everyone, we do have a 4th of July celebration on Sunday, the 4th, and we will be beginning our festivities at 10:00 AM on Commercial Avenue with a town photo at Fifth and Commercial. Right after the town photo, we'll have a patriotic program. And then everyone needs to go get in line along O Avenue, starting on Third Street and Commercial. And the parade, 4th of July parade, will start at 11:00 AM. The last time I looked at our list, we had over 40 groups have registered to participate, and I'm sure that's growing, from marching groups to floats to dancing groups and vehicles. So it should be a really fun time. We're still, we're having fireworks Sunday evening. They'll start right at dark, which is right now, it's around 10:30 PM. And we are still accepting donations for our fireworks. We have the cost of a tug this year. The barge was donated to the city by Culbertson Marine, but the barge, I mean, the tug is really the costly piece of that. I think we've raised, between last year's donations and this year's donations, we've raised about 27,000. And our total cost this year with the tug cost is 36,000. So we're coming up a little short. So if you're inclined, send some donations our way. We're looking forward to a patriotic, really fun fireworks, 4th of July, getting us out of COVID and getting back into community activities. And that, at this time, will conclude my report. I will go on to item 2B, which is our Finance Committee update. Do we have one?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
The Finance Committee did meet. It was eons ago.
Last week.
Yeah. I know you were there. Can you give the report?
I don't know what's...
I can't. For the life of me, cannot recall what we discussed.
Steve, you want to update us, because I'm in good way.
Sure, yeah, because I, I mean, I was dialed in, so I don't remember very much either. I wasn't, yeah, I was kind of on the road.
Hold on. Yeah, we aren't paying attention. Can you update us?
Certainly, Mayor.
Thank you.
I will refer back to the agenda. Hopefully, I didn't delete that section of... Yeah, so the agenda, I brought up the point that Waste Management has contacted the city again regarding recycling, and they have requested an audience with Finance Committee, which Finance Committee has said they would be happy to, happy to hear them out before going to full council. So that's scheduled for the July 28th. The July 28th Finance Committee. So it's Wednesday, the 28th at 5:00 PM. I mentioned a couple of, kind of, accounting issues that I'll be bringing forward to council the next time we do a budget amendment, which is right now kind of scheduled for mid-July. What I'd like to do is bring a half-year finance update and a budget amendment. And a couple of the things I talked about, there was Fund 106 is the fund that we use to capture all of our TBD sales tax that ends up flowing through to the overlay program. When we established that TBD program, it was required that we have a separate fund because it was a separate entity. That's no longer the case. City Council has incorporated control of the TBD. So we're going to eliminate that fund, and it'll just be a direct transfer, and then eliminate the double, the double budgeting effect from that. I mentioned the, we talked a little bit about the ARP funding, again, the American Recovery Plan Act. We are still trying to secure a reasonable answer on the amount of the allocation the city has been given. We are between 40% to 70% less in our allocation than similar cities. So we've talked with Treasury, our local, not local, our federal Congress, Congressman's Office, and others. So we're still trying to procure an answer on that. And then, just briefly, the May Finance status I mentioned, which there was really no unusual news. But something I would share that I just saw today, I sent an email out to Mr. Miller, who's the Chair of the Lodging Tax Committee and the Mayor, but our lodging tax receipts for June just came in today, and they are the... So the June receipts are from the April lodging tax days, and they are the highest revenue for June that we have ever received. So not only back to pre-COVID levels, but exceeding pre-COVID levels, which is great.
There's also a shutdown that month on the shelves. I don't know if that contributed. Okay. Anything else on Finance? All right, we'll move on now to the Library Committee report.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Cleland and Ms. McDougal.
Go for it.
Okay. So Mr. McDougal, Mr. Young and I all met for our Library Committee meeting. Good news is they're open six days a week. Sundays are still closed, but they're back in full swing and enjoying seeing the public not only enter the building and check out books, but actually spend quality time sitting and enjoying those spaces and talking with folks. There's about, there was about 3,300 people that went through the door since the beginning of June, or through the beginning of June, and I think that's about a third of what was normal, but we were closed for a significant chunk of this first half of the year. So they were pretty pleased with the numbers since reopening. And it's gathering momentum. The meeting rooms and study rooms are still closed, but they plan to get them open early to mid-July, once the, we're fully back open. Postports, they're hoping to get up and started again around mid-July. And then we really had a great conversation about what the library is doing moving forward when it comes to the children's section. There was a very generous donor and who wants to kind of do some work, revamping it, bringing it up, and making it a new and exciting place for, for our kids. They've, they've committed quite a sizable sum, and we are working with, the city and the foundation are working on kind of an MOU so that everything is handled appropriately when it comes to those funds. But the, the sneak peek is I think it's going to be marine-themed, but they are just beginning the process of planning for it. But that is pretty neat. My daughter was there, and she was enjoying picking out books again for, it's been quite some time. Then we also talked a bit about the 2022 budget, just because we're the, we're that committee who, as a sounding board. You know, there's, there's some, there's some hope to have some training, and then also add in the lost librarian position. Beyond that, there's some discussion of, or there was a long-term goal of working on the teen center. The teens are, there's teenage group of people like to be a little bit louder and be able to talk and do some projects and really engage with one another. So there was some tentative plans before COVID to possibly enclose an area so that they could work and gather. This is kind of a long-term goal at this point, but I, I think we all really encouraged the library to come back. We, they're kind of wrapping up their, the last year of their strategic plan. There isn't really time to necessarily start on a new strategic plan, but I, I think we all are in agreement that we would love to kind of get a refresher course on the strategic plan that was from 2017 to 2022, or a refresher course, somewhat of a checklist of everything that they have accomplished, and then what projects are still out there for the future. You know, the, the Library Committee is kind of a newer committee that was started in early 29, was it, no, 2020. So we only got to meet in person, I think, once or twice. But just having that kind of connection and updates for the general council and for the public would be great. And so they're more than open to doing that. The last thing is there, there's a, they're looking at possibly doing a Wi-Fi and charging station. That's, they, through a private donation, that will correspond with the electric vehicle charging stations, so kind of tag teaming on the electrical and some of that, those construction costs. We've got a lot of folks who either live here or are traveling through here, going to the library, trying to use one of the few outlet chargers, and then also taking advantage of the free Wi-Fi. So we're, so we got kind of a rough update of what that's going to look like. One of our biggest concerns was, at least from our Library Committee, was, you know, how will the electricity and Wi-Fi be available 24 hours a day? And our, what we would like to see, or at least pursue, is the ability to turn it on and off so it can be either run the same amount of hours as the library is open or kind of following daylight hours, and at least the ability to modify as necessary. And just, you know, the friends at the library are trying to get creative of how to sell books and fundraise. They're doing some things outside. I think they're going to be at one of the farmer's markets. So thank you to them, because they are one of the biggest purchasers of our books. And so it's great to see them back and working for, for the library. So that's all for now.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Young.
Yeah, no, I wanted to add just one thing to Ms. Cleland McGrath's wonderful report, as she always does, is that I think that there was some discussion about the reopening of the Friendship Shop. And part of that is that they're looking at reopening it and trying to figure out how they rethink how it's staffed, how it functions. But that's one of the things that I thought was just important to mention. I'm looking forward to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on now to the Fiber Committee update.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. McDougal.
I can give the, the meeting update. There was also a meeting that happened today with the Washington State Broadband Office that I had a prior commitment that prevented me from attending. So if one of the other members would like to report on that. But the committee met last week, and we got great discussion with the Fiber Department. Part of that discussion was actually sort of making, making plans for this meeting that occurred earlier today with the Washington State Broadband Office and about some funding asks that, that we have. Additional stuff, though, outside of that, we are looking at... I'm going through, going through notes. The, the 2021 expansion out to the West End construction has begun. The RBC construction work is underway. They're, they've begun trenching and vault placement. And they're breaking that construction, or the entire West End project, West of Annacopper Road, is broken up into four sort of large subsections. And the department published a map that has, that shows what that looks like. If anyone would like a copy of that, I'm happy to send it on or just to send an email to Emily or Jim. We expect that work to proceed through the next few months and then to start turning up customers, like late summer, I think is the, is the goal. Then went through the numbers where we're at today. We're at about 770 total customers, 664 residential, 115 businesses. And in our, basically in our service areas, we've exceeded, well, easily exceeded 40% in the original three service areas, the Central Business District, Old Town and M Avenue. CBD is actually almost 50%, or M Avenue is 46%. And then in the aerial expansion that has proceeded following those original trial areas, we're very close to 35%. And then in the West End, we're at 25% have signed up for service. So those numbers are all looking really good. And that's the main stuff from the committee meeting. If anyone else wanted to report on the broadband meeting earlier today, or if, we don't have anything from that yet, that's okay too.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Young.
No, I'll get a shot. I know the mayor and staff welcomed Russ Elliott, who is the heading the State's Broadband Office. And I know they gave him a good tour, and they met up with Senator Lovelace and looked at some other stuff, gave a background. And then myself and Mr. Walters from the Fiber Committee were able to sit down with the mayor, Chris from Noanet, and the rest of the Fiber staff to talk about really understanding Mr. Elliott's role, which, as I understood it, and the mayor, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, they, they're going to manage the National Telecommunication Information Administration's grant coming to the state, and we have an opportunity to, to apply for one of those grants. And it seemed like they're still working out some of the details, but I think we're in a great place to have a, have an opportunity to get to those grants, because 12 months, we're shovel-ready in a 12-month period. We're obviously already putting shovels in the ground, and they're looking for a sustainable fiber setup. So I think it was a very positive meeting we had with, with those folks. It's just a little quick turnaround for our staff to get the information back. And obviously, there's some competitors, competitors like other municipalities or other fiber providers looking for this money. And, and again, there's all sorts of other grant opportunities out there, but I think we got some real good opportunities. I think one of the best opportunities is for, if you recall, east of Annacopper Mine Road on the map, that was kind of an area in between two areas that we're working on. And that seemed like an ideal opportunity at about a $2.5 million ask in there. So, you know, Mayor, Mr. Walters, if you have anything to add, feel free. But that's, that's what I took away. It was a good meeting.
Mr. Walters? So, no, that was a really good report. So, okay. Then we'll move on now to our Planning Committee report.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met at 5:00 today. Mr. Walters, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and I were with staff members, Director Don Meesmer and Libby Grage. And we talked about the RF4 daycare interim ordinance that we'll be discussing later in the agenda today, basically due to the lack of daycare for both children and adults and the difficulty in establishing those, and the hopes of making it a little easier and simpler for, for organizations to create those opportunities. The majority of our discussion was about T Avenue and homeless people that are living there and ongoing efforts to help them connect with services and housing opportunities that are more permanent and stable. And we've had a couple of people move over to the new housing in Burlington, and a couple more have been relocated to city property for the moment. We'll see how that goes. And Captain Floyd has been helping a lot of folks. They are communicating with them, checking in with them, and also other providers. So the Anacortes Housing Authority is going to reach out to those people and make sure that anyone who wants to can get on the Housing Authority waitlist. As long as it is, at least they can be on the list. So ongoing efforts to make sure that things are relatively stable there, that there's not crime happening, any illegal behavior, or anything that's going to negatively affect other, other citizens or visitors to Anacortes. So it's very tricky. There is an RCW that allows cities to create sort of emergency temporary homeless housing opportunities that requires an ordinance. So the city could be a host agency, and there's, we could create an ordinance with rules of use to try to make that happen, to have a stable place for people temporarily. So that's, that's an ongoing discussion, and that will be a full conversation with council upcoming here. So it's a very obviously complex situation. And one thing that we discussed is that the, the great majority of those folks are Anacortes folks. I think there's been some perception that they're coming from elsewhere, but they are our, they are people too. And so it's, it's not like people are flocking here from elsewhere. So we need to, that's something that I would like us to remember, that they are our citizens also. But how do we, how do we navigate this very challenging situation for the city? And hopefully, we can, we can do good things. So that's an ongoing conversation, and that was, that was pretty much it. Thanks.
Any other comments on that? All right.
Mayor Gere. No, I just wanted to add one thing. I did receive some phone calls from some of the homeless people, which I was a little surprised by, but, you know, the explanation I got, at least the narrative I got, was that, you know, they are working, but yet not making enough money to afford to live here. And, and so their concern was just in trying to find a place for them to be able to continue working, and yet, at the same time, be, feel safe, because I think that they were indicating that, given all of the fees rotating to campsites, they're spending approximately $2,000 a month. And I was thinking, why aren't you able to get a place to live? But then we had added on to that the shortage of rentals. And so it's, it's, as Ms. Moulton said, a complex issue. And, and I'm looking forward to that discussion. Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to item three on the agenda, is public comment. If there's anyone in the public who would like to address the council on an issue that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Okay. All right, well, yes, okay. So Walt Gutterbach, go ahead. Welcome.
This was for items that are not on the agenda. My item is on the agenda. I may have misunderstood.
Okay, yeah. So if you're, if it's on the agenda, you can speak at that time. Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, so we'll go on then to our consent agenda items, four A and B.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
Move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we're going to open up item five. It's a public hearing. It's regarding the City of Anacortes's 2021 docket of proposed comprehensive plan and development regulation amendments. This is an especially only item this evening, and it is open for public comment.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, at this time, introduce Ms. Libby Grage. She will be guiding us through this process tonight.
Thank you. Welcome, Libby.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, everyone. I'm going to just share my screen here. And hopefully, that worked. Thank you. So, good evening. So you may recall that I was last with you back on May 24th at the regular council meeting. And at that meeting, we sort of kicked off the annual comprehensive plan and development regulation amendment process. We gave a sort of a brief overview of the process and talked a little bit about some of the citizen-initiated petitions that had been received by the department. And since then, staff has developed a recommendation, excuse me, a summary and recommendations for the docketing of each of those amendment requests that were received. And we've also developed some additional city-initiated amendments to the comprehensive plan and development regulations that I'll talk about a little bit later on this evening. And so tonight, we are holding the required public hearing on the department's recommendations for the 2021 docket. Just a quick agenda. So as I mentioned, first, we're going to, staff's going to just give a really brief introduction. And then the petitioners, the citizens that submitted petitions for comprehensive plan amendments will have an opportunity to present their amendment request to city council and the public. And then I will go over the city-initiated proposals. Then we could open it up for public comments. And then finally, we could close the public hearing and talk about next steps in the process. So this slide is showing a summary of the annual amendment docketing process. The procedures and criteria for, for this amendment process are outlined... The procedures and criteria for, for this amendment process are outlined in the Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter 1916 Legislative Actions. And so really the, the entire process kicks off with submittal of petitions by members of the public by the last business day in March. And then the planning department, as I mentioned, has reviewed those and looked at the criteria in the Anacortes Municipal Code and then made a recommendation to city council on which of those amendments to, to include in this year's docket. And then the next, and, and the next step is that city council will hold a public hearing on the planning department's recommendations for docketing. So that's what we're doing this evening. Next up in the process, after the public hearing is closed and the written comment period is closed, I just, I should note that there, the written comment period is still going to be open until this Wednesday, which is the 30th. And then finally, after council's considered all of the comments received, as I mentioned, you'll determine whether or not to include, exclude, or defer each of the petitions. The petitions that are docketed will continue on through the review process, which includes CIPA environmental review, planning commission review, public hearing, a recommendation by planning commission to, to city council and then back to city council for review and action. I just wanted to put this up here. So as I mentioned, staff did provide a memo that contains our summary of each of the petitions that we received and also the staff recommended changes. And that memo is available on the website, comprehensive plan amendments website dated June 9th, 2021. And spoiler, spoiler alert, the planning department's recommending docketing all, all of the amendment requests at this time. So this is a slide that I showed last time, but this is a list of the citizen initiated amendment requests that were received, that were timely received and met all of the criteria for complete submittal. The first one was submitted by Evergreen Islands and that is a proposed amendment to the housing element of the comprehensive plan. It would add two new policies to goal H1 of the housing element regarding regulation of short-term rentals. The second was a future land use map change proposal by Thomas Skillings. And that proposal is to change a portion of property that's located on the southeast corner of the intersection of 35th and V Avenue. And the request is to change a portion of that property from an industrial designation to a residential medium density designation. And then finally, a petition by Ryan Walters to amend the utilities element of the comprehensive plan and this, and then it would add a new goal and related policies to increase recycling and composting to 65% of the municipal solid waste stream. So that's just a quick summary. And then I wanted to open it up and invite the applicants to present their requests. And I think I saw Tom Blade with Evergreen Islands, if you'd like to hop on.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. I was trying to start my video, but it won't let me. So the icon's there, but, but anyway. Evergreen Islands submitted this application for the, to amend the Anacortes comp plan to include policies that protect our residential neighborhoods and support low income housing by regulating short-term vacation rentals. And we are seeking to add two new policies to the comp plan. One is housing supply and variety goal and a short-term vacation rentals policy and mitigation of adverse impacts to residential neighborhoods policy. So what, what led us to this application was an article about Sedona. And it, it was entitled Sedona's housing was threatening the sense of community and some blame vacation rentals. And so it, it's quite analogous. The Sedona is its relationship with Phoenix and Anacortes relationship with Seattle. And so they're two major metropolis, you know, within 100 miles of each other. And so, you know, it gives an opportunity for people with money to spare to come into Anacortes and, and buy low price or lower price housings, properties and then convert them into income properties. And as a result, that will raise property prices and started filtering out people, homes that low income people can buy. So we, and in the letters that I've sent today, it discusses some of the problems with Sedona's and it's includes affordable housing has been an issue with the city with million dollar homes and few apartments. And it's one of the most beautiful places and, and it's, it's many can't even find place to live. In Sedona, the vacation rentals have grown more than 1,000 homes or 20% of Sedona's housing inventory. And more than 40% of Sedona's workforce lives outside of the city. And the rise in short-term rentals has also created competition for boutique hotels and bed and breakfast. And the housing, issue of housing has only compounded existing problems of getting people to continue the living in, in our tourist town. When Sedona, the residents pay 800 to 900 bucks a minute for rent in the city, they are now paying 1,800 to 1,900 dollars a month. So the, it's, it's, it's pretty complex when one starts looking at what's all involved in accomplishing this. And the MRSC, the Municipal Research and Services Center has an article entitled Local Governments Catching Up With Airbnb and Other Short-Term Transient Rental Businesses. And it says, it's probably time to consider community needs to establish updated short-term transient rental regulations. And so it's identified the following issues. The lack of lodging and sales tax collections on short-term rentals, unregulated traffic, parking and noise impacts on the neighboring, on the surrounding neighborhoods and non-compliant life safety standards that are commonly applied to other types of lives such as hotels, motels and bed and breakfast. The, the bed and breakfasts are covered, covered in Title 19 and they are allowed in, as permitted uses in R4 and RA, R4A, but as conditional uses in R2, R2A, R3, R3A. And also in the development code Title 19, the purpose of bread and, of a section is intended to ensure parking impact on surrounding neighbors' health and safety and other considerations and limit any adverse impacts of bed and breakfast on the surrounding neighborhood. So we'd like to see some of that kinds of language be adopted that would cover short-term rentals. So in conclusion, we urge the City of Anacortes to develop ordinances that regulate short-term rentals to preclude the negative impacts on unregulated short-term rentals. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening.
So Libby, was your thought that we go through each one or does each one have a comment after the presentation?
Um, I think that's, it's up to the council. My, my thought was that we would go, we could go through the three applications, presentations and then open it up for a comment.
Okay. I'll do it that way. Just double check. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So go ahead. Let's do our next introduction.
Uh, the next applicant was Mr. Tom Skillings. Is he with us?
Yes, yes. Tom, if he'll turn your microphone on. I can see you. I just can't hear you.
There, I got my mic on. I got a screen I want to share if I can make that work. It says I can't do it while Libby is.
Oh, let me stop sharing. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Should be able to now.
There we go. And share. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, members of the Anacortes staff. My, my name's Tom Skillings. With me this evening is my wife Laura. Verifying my screen is being shared. Can you see that? Okay. Okay. We live at 3506 Fenalgo Bay Road. As Libby mentioned, it's right next to other two lots that we also own in the corner of 35th Street and B Avenue. This lot or parcel A is where our current house is. That's 3506. We recently built a new house on that lot and hurry, have a request in, submit it into the city to do a boundary line adjustment that is described in, I'll show on the next screen. So the, these three parcels that I've shown you are, are zone R3 in green and the pink is the, in, in industrial lot zoning. The lots are shown here. The parcel A is this parcel here. Parcel B is shown in here and then parcel C is, is above. You know that parcel B has a split zoning on it. What we are wanting to do is move the lot line from where it is today over to this location here. Making the primary purpose is when we built a new house and we built it right over the, replaced an existing house. When we got done, we find that the, the corner of the property of the house was about 10 feet away or less to the, to the property line. And we'd like to move that lot over, given us room to, to put a future garage in, in this location. One more exhibit, please. So this is what, what our request is, is to change, again, the boundary line adjustment to this black line here. The, according to city staff, Libby says that we, requires a map amendment to change the zoning from, from the industrial to, to the R3. So that's the component of the, the map amendment. Pretty basic. That's boundary line adjustment with just moving the, the zoning following the, the R3 zoning, just following that over to the, over to the lot line. So with that, respectfully quest, request the council approve this middle going forward.
Well, thank you for your presentation. We'll do the next one and then we'll get into the session. Thank you. This was mine.
Okay. Let me stop sharing. There we go.
All right. So Libby.
Yes, thank you. The, the last petition was from Councilmember Walters.
This is a fairly straightforward policy proposal that has the ultimate objective of trying to make progress on rolling back some of our substantial utility rate increases that we've made in the last eight years. A lot of those were really necessary because we lacked reserves in our utility funds to do things like replace the water tank on Whistle Lake Road. But it's also important that we realize that those rate increases have real impacts on our residents, especially seniors on fixed incomes, families that are just struggling to get by and stay in their houses. So there are a lot of ways to attack that problem. And one way is just to try to be more efficient in the way we provide services. And so this one just takes garbage, trash, recycling, yard waste pickup. When we evaluated trash recycling and yard waste rates in 2019, we looked at a variety of rate scenarios and there's a link in the materials to the consultant's report. Scenario C found that we could cut rates by 28% if we could get to a place where people are diverting 65% of their trash. So that happens to be that 65% number, diversion of your, of your trash to yard waste and recycling is a number that we have already approved in the countywide solid waste management plan. So the entire county has adopted this target rate of diversion of 65%. And what this policy does, the, the proposal is to incorporate that into our comprehensive plan itself and provide some other angles for staff to help us push towards achieving that 65% goal. So for example, we could make composting easier by making, by providing other container options like other communities do. Right now, if you want to compost, you can get a 96 gallon bin. But if you don't have that much yard waste, you probably don't want the 96 gallon bin. But you could divert your food waste with a smaller container. If we could adopt policies to get multifamily buildings, to offer food waste collection and require new ones to provide space in their design for provision of those containers. If we do a waste characterization study, which is a term of art that they use in the municipal solid waste field, to identify what's in our waste stream, to see if there are major elements that we can divert in some way. You don't know until you look. Again, if we can achieve this diversion rate, there are a couple of different ways that we could achieve a reduction in, in rates for our residents. And one of those ways could be reducing trips, reducing personnel costs, reducing greenhouse gas emissions by reducing collection frequency. And there are a variety of ways to do that. This doesn't prescribe that we would do that unless it actually was feasible. And for sure, I am certainly open to modification of the language to make, to make it very clear that these are options, but to also make it clear that we're setting a target because without a target, we don't know what we're shooting for. And what's not in this proposal, just as another example, is the possibility of the city itself picking up yard waste. Because right now we farm that out to a third-party contractor. It is fairly expensive for residences that want it. And maybe that's a possibility for us to look to, to ourselves in the future. But it would provide a, a goal for staff to be working towards as they work in this field every day and can generate ideas to help us get there.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. So at, at this point, we could take public comments, if you would like, on the, on the three, these three petitions or I could move straight into the staff recommended amendments.
Well, what, what do you recommend?
Um, I'm guessing that probably most of the comments are about these three. So maybe we could take those.
Yep. Okay. That's what I was thinking. All right. If you would like to speak now, just raise your hand. Okay, Walter, welcome. Mr. Gutterbach?
Thank you. Regarding the solid waste, I wonder if part of the study could also look at, at how much of what we put in recycling actually gets recycled. A lot of foreign countries that used to take our plastics no longer take them. The market value of many recyclable items has gone down. And a lot of people put stuff in the recycling that really isn't recyclable. So I always wonder whether the, I know recycling is like a religion to many, but having three truck, trash trucks driving around every week, I wonder what the real benefit is. In the case of, of yard waste and food waste, it's clear because composting is very practical. But I really wonder about recycling, recycling. I'm not saying to eliminate it, but maybe it could be reduced or made more rational. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Wexler, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, I hope you can hear me clearly. I would like to, uh, ask you to docket the Evergreen Islands, proposal, uh, proposed amendment for short-term rental regulation in a comprehensive plan. The document before you, uh, represents approximately two years.
Okay, Brian, your mic went off. Can you turn your mic back on?
Is that good?
Yeah, much better. You might go back a sentence or two.
I'd just like you all to, to urge you all to, uh, docket the Evergreen Islands proposal. It represents about two years of really good research by Evergreen Islands board members and general membership into both the economic and social impacts of short-term rentals on communities like ours, as well as how similar communities have sought to regulate those impacts. Some of those communities, uh, are, are, are Bellingham, Port Townsend, Squim, Leavenworth, uh, Winthrop, and several others that were well researched. I believe this is a, a, a really excellent step forward. It's sort of a fait accompli document you could bring right into the comprehensive plan, uh, in a well-researched and well-founded manner. And I, uh, just, uh, uh, an anecdote for you to think about right here in the Northwest. On the west side, uh, or the east side of Camino Island, there's quite a few sort of contained communities that, uh, front on to, uh, the lagoons there. Several marina communities. Most of those houses and several of those communities down there have complained as, uh, communities with COAs, et cetera, that they have less than forty percent actual resident occupancy. So that's, uh, one island away from us. And it's not well-regulated in Island County yet, so they can get away with that in those communities. But, uh, that's just an example of what's already happening in the Northwest in this kind of wild, wild west environment without communities being able, uh, having regulations in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wettcher. Okay, Ross would like to comment on these proposed changes. Any other member of the audience? Okay, so at this time, we'll turn it over to the council for discussion. Is that correct? Yes.
Oh, i- if that was the plan.
Go ahead, Libby.
Mayor Garrett, thank you. Um, I, I do still have some, uh, staff-initiated amendments that I'd like to run through and, and allow for public comment unless, uh, council would like to ask questions about the first three.
No, I'll wait till you're done.
Thank you. I'm just gonna share my screen again. Okay. Oops, can everybody see my screen? No?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, um, city staff or the planning department are proposing, several, well, one comprehensive plan amendment and multiple amendments to the development regulations in Title nineteen, the Unified Development Code. So the first one, um, is looking at, uh, this section of the comprehensive plan. It's in the introduction section on page I, or one dash twelve of the comprehensive plan. Um, and it's a section that tops, that incorporates by reference other city planning documents, other city plans. And some of these really aren't necessary to be incorporated by reference into the conference of plan. And so our proposal is to strike those documents from this section. And, and then also, um, updating some of the titles of the plans that are needed to be incorporated by reference. Um, and then removing the, the dates of some of the plans so that we don't need to go back in and amend this section every time one of these plans is updated as it, as they are, uh, frequently on a, um, rotating basis, seven or eight years, I believe. So that's the one and only staff, uh, recommended conference of plan amendment. And if there aren't any questions, I'll move on to the next one. Yeah, so the, the next couple of amendments that I'm gonna talk about are proposed changes to Title nineteen, Unified Development Code. So as, as most of you know, uh, over the past five or so years, the, uh, Title nineteen, the code has undergone some pretty major, um, organizational changes and functional changes. And so staff has been keeping a list of, um, items that come up through review of projects. You know, we get feedback from members of the public, from other staff members that are reviewing projects and property owners that are submitting, uh, permit applications saying, you know, this, this area sure could be clearer. You know, that this, this particular, uh, regulation is hard to administer, understand. And so a lot of what I'm gonna be talking about now is, is some of those, some of those items. And this is, this is following the memo that's in your packet, um, with the staff summaries and recommendations. So all I did was screenshot, uh, that section of the memo. So the first one, um, is regarding, uh, chapter nineteen twenty, application procedures. And, uh, this section is related to vesting of development applications, section eight, nineteen twenty oh seven oh. And what we'd like to do is revise the language to clarify that approval of certain development application types does not provide vested rights for subsequent building permit application. So an example of that would be, um, like a, a site plan application that comes in for review. If it receives approval, the, and then the applicant waits for several years to submit a building permit application. If the code's changed in between that time, the applicant would still be subject to the new regulations at the time of building permit application. So we wanted to just make that really clear since the site plan review permit is a new type of, uh, permit in our code, a new type of review procedure. The, the next, uh, couple are in chapter nineteen twenty-two concurrency. And the first one here is, uh, proposal to re-insert some of the language into a new section that was actually omitted in, it says two thousand nine here, but I think it might have been two thousand sixteen. Uh, but there was a section that talked about the planning director establishing a concurrency facilities review program and administrative, uh, excuse me, review program. That's kind of guides how the city staff monitor capacity of concurrency facilities. So we'd like to add that back into the code to kind of, um, bring that to light, that such a thing does exist and to provide, uh, guidance for, um, applicants and, uh, also city staff. And then the next item here would be, uh, revision to section nineteen twenty-two oh five oh concurrency test. And we'd like to add some, um, application requirements. Put a note in there that, um, applicants are required to submit information that will, that's deemed necessary to help the city, um, make a concurrency determination. And then also, uh, we'd like to add some review fee language that talks about, um, third-party review of concurrency applications. And then also we, a reimbursement to the city of contractor costs associated with that concurrency review. The next one on the list is nineteen forty-three residential uses. And this is a change that's proposed just to keep up with some changes that have occurred in the state law, RCW seventy-one twenty-eight oh one oh, which has to do with licensing of adult family homes. There was a change a couple of years ago. Currently, our definition of adult family home refers, references care for up to eight, or excuse me, six adults. And so we'd like to make an update to this definition to correspond with the change in the RCW that actually allows for provision of services up to eight adults upon approval by DSHS. So it's just, uh, a change to make sure that our code is consistent with the state law. The next couple here are related to, um, Division Five, which is community design. So that's talking about our public street standards, private access standards, driveway locations, et cetera. So we've got a few in here that, um, we've talked with, uh, staff from the Public Works Department has, has pointed out a couple of areas where they feel like some additional clarification would be helpful. Um, and the first one is nineteen fifty-two public street design. And that was, um, considering changing some of the terminology that we use in the regulations. A lot of the geometric design standards refer to, uh, parking lanes. And the suggestion there was to move more toward using the term parking pockets, uh, to more, to emphasize that the comprehensive plan policies include talking about, uh, reducing impervious surfaces, maybe focusing less on single occupancy vehicles and parking. And so that was a, a suggestion that the Public Works Department had, just to change the terminology in certain instances where it made sense. Nineteen fifty-two oh four oh eight two. This section has to do with, the fact that new development that is required to construct frontage improvements, uh, those improvements have to meet the geometric standards for that particular street type in our code. Um, and there's a couple of different tables that have the standards, you know, based on whether it's an arterial street, a collector, a local, or, uh, lane type, I believe. Uh, but there are some areas of town where traditionally, um, none of those standards have, well, they're new standards, but none of those have really applied and they don't apply. And what our code says is that they don't apply if the city council has, um, approved special design standards for certain areas. So an example of that is in Cap Sani, uh, that area. There's not sidewalks on both sides. There's only, you know, kind of more rustic, uh, pedestrian connectivity, which isn't really consistent with any of our existing, or the new, uh, street design standards. But, um, that's sort of what's been, um, required over time for new development. So what we'd like to do is bring those cross-sections that the Public Works develop, uh, department has developed to city council so that you can look at them and then adopt them and they can be formalized, put in the engineering, uh, design standards. The next one here is one of our new, street types that was developed with the recent development regulation updates, uh, was sort of intended to create a smaller right-of-way width, smaller paved width, to allow for developments up to nine units to access from this sort of smaller, uh, public road design. And, um, what we've noticed is that it's not really clear in that section that those developments that are going to access from those smaller, from the smaller road width, that might not have on-street parking. Those developments, we want to make sure that they are still providing for, um, guest parking and service deliveries and, and making sure that they're integrating those features into the new, uh, road design. And so we'd like to add a note that, um, reminds folks of that. And then along the same, the same lines, um, with these smaller street standards for new development, the lane standard and some of the, uh, new local access streets, which are just twenty feet wide, and don't necessarily have to contain on-street parking. The fire marshal needs to have the ability to require no parking signage. Because in some cases, the road paved with this twenty feet, which can't accommodate on-street parking and a passing, uh, fire truck or emergency vehicle simultaneously. And so we need to have the ability to, um, make sure that we can require no parking on those types of streets. Nineteen fifty-three oh three oh B driveway location. So this one subsection B two, we have some standards that relate to site access for, uh, corner lots. And there's sort of a hierarchy. Um, you know, if a corner lot is on a arterial, has access from an arterial and a local access street, the code says, okay, you have to take access from the local access street. And it kind of works its way down. On this particular one, if a law, if a corner lot has, is accessed from, has frontage on two local access streets, it's difficult to determine, or do we want to determine which of those streets the, the lot is required to access from? So, um, Public Works Department is requesting some additional clarification on whether that's something that we need to do or, um, you know, what the definition of lowest volume street is. So subsection B three has to do with, um, the conditions identified in A and B need further clarification to assist an application, including defining the functional capacity for the alley. So, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have the, these sections here. I should. But the, this particular standard is requiring that a new development access from the alley when an alley is available. So this applies to a lot of, um, the R four zone properties. A lot of the residential areas actually have, uh, an alley that's available. So when new development comes in, the Public Works Department, we're, we're looking at, you know, requiring, uh, alley access instead of a new street driveway. And where there is some, uh, clarity, additional clarity or specificity needed, some more guidance, is, uh, there's this term functional capacity for an alley. So when we have a, a block that is zoned for multifamily and it's currently developed with, um, all single-family residences. And we're starting to see redevelopment of these areas with new multifamily buildings. But, uh, the alley is, some folks are wanting to, um, add new driveways onto the street. Our code is saying though, it has to be from the alley. But the question is, um, once there is full redevelopment of certain multifamily areas, it's not exceeding the functional capacity of the alley if we're forcing all new development to access from the alley, if that makes sense. And so we'd like to look at that issue a little bit more and, and, and see if we can come up with some better, uh, some better guidance for, for new developments. I think I hit all those. And I'm getting to the ends here. So, um, we, you may recall, we added some new standards, made some changes to the fence code in twenty nineteen, especially in, in cases where, um, and there would, there's a corner lot or a through lot. So whereas before you were able to build a fence all the way up to your side street line, a six-foot tall fence all the way up to the side street line. Under the new code, it is required to Under the new code, it is required to be a maximum of forty-two inches or step back five feet. So what we're running into is identifying the parameters for what constitutes maintenance and repair. So when somebody has to go in and fix that fence, can they replace half of it? And still, you know, continue the non-conformance? Or do they need to take the whole thing down and move it back to conform to the, to the new code? So we'd like to get some better clarity on that. And then also identify when a fence permit is required for all new fences, for repairs. Just add some, some clarity to that section. And then finally, in chapter nineteen sixty-seven, signs. There's an incorrect cross-reference. This is a simple one. We just have the wrong, the wrong reference there in that one section. And then we'd also like to look at fixing some potentially conflicting provisions for commercial and non-commercial temporary signs. We noticed one that, one provision that could be confusing about what types of signs are allowed in the public right-of-way. And so we'd like to take a look at that and come up with some language that'll help provide some clearer standards. And so on all of these, you'll notice I didn't, I don't have any specific proposed fixes or draft text. The plan is really to kind of bring these items to light. And then if the council decides to docket these items, then we move them forward to Planning Commission and work on the specifics and developing the draft language for additional public review. And would we like to have council discussion now? This is kind of my, my last slide moving into next steps. So we could do questions and discussion.
It's a good time now. Yep. Mr. Miller, did you want to?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I realize this is a discussion and a public hearing for docketing. But just kind of a reminder that whether you agree or disagree or with any of the substance, it's really about docketing. And for me, if it's legal, if it's filed properly, unless we had so many different requests, hundreds and hundreds of them, then we, then we might consider prioritizing which ones we docket. But other than that, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm for docketing, docketing all of these and then have a good discussion about the substance of them at a point later on in time. But again, I realize that we have to continue the public hearing for at least another, another week or so. Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young.
No, no, I just wanted to indicate that I agree with Mr. Miller on this one. And I'm very much agreeable for docketing the items and we'll go from there. But I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Morton.
I'm gonna add my voice in agreement, and I want to thank Ms. Grage and staff for the thoroughness of their analysis of what needs to be updated in the code. That's a lot of work. So thanks.
Other comments?
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm in support of seeing these items move forward on the docket. And I appreciate the folks who, who presented and then, and lent their voice of support. I think there's a lot of work to be done in Planning Commission, so I'm glad that there's the opportunity for them to kind of go through and do a more of a deep dive on these, but they all seem very reasonable and good additions.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. McGiegle?
I'm also in support of docketing all of these changes and wanted to thank Mr. Skilling and Mr. Glade for their presentations, Mr. Walters as well for his presentation, and the commenters as well. Thanks.
Any other comments? Sounds pretty unanimous, Libby.
I like that.
Yeah. All right. The next step.
So next steps. So yes, the written public comment period on docketing will end on June thirtieth, so that's this Wednesday. And then we'll plan to come back to city council on July twelfth with the draft resolution for you to approve, hopefully setting the, the docket. And then after the docket set, we'll, staff will conduct environmental review and move forward to Planning Commission to, to start our work, go through workshops with the Planning Commission to sort of refine some of these things, and then move on to public hearing and ultimately Planning Commission recommendation to city council. And timeframe for that would be September, October. And then back to city council, the goal would be by the end of the year, we'd like to finish up these, these, this amendment process. And that's all I've got for you.
So I think, based on what I've heard, I'm willing to close the public hearing tonight. And the public, written public comment will be accepted through Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Correct.
Okay, so any other comments before I close the public hearing? All right, this time I'm going to close the public hearing. I encourage people to do any written comments by the thirtieth to our planning staff. And really great presentation tonight, Libby, and thank you, members of the community that came to present and to offer comments.
Thank you.
All right. So, okay, so then we're going to move on now to item six on our agenda under business. Six A, this is also a public comment. This is ordinance thirty ninety-one, an interim ordinance to facilitate the development of daycare facilities in the R four zone.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Interim ordinance thirty ninety-one is an ordinance that would facilitate the development of daycare facilities in the R four use zone. So there are currently in our dollar regulations, two types of daycare. Daycare one, which is up to twelve adults or children. And daycare two, which is more than twelve adults and or children. So the daycare two requires a conditional use permit, which is a type four review. A type four review is, is a very complicated review in many cases, a conditional use permit, which would require architectural drawings, would also require a neighborhood meeting, pre-application conference, review by the Planning Commission, and then moving on to the city council. And so that process alone could take many months, four to six months, I think, is the usual timeframe. So the idea for this interim ordinance is to make the daycare twos, which is again, more than twelve adults or children in any twenty-four hour period, a permitted use in the R four use zone. Doing so then would alleviate the necessity of the conditional use permit and all the processes that go with it. And so the one thing about the conditional use permits is that it does, of course, allow significant public input and comment. Though, once you have developed a standards for a specific use such as daycare two, which might include parking, drop-off and pickup zones, and so forth, then you can address what issues may come up through that process, through the actual standards that go with that approved use. And so what our, our hope is, is that today we can receive public comment, if there is any. And then we would bring this back on the twelfth, which would be after a fourteen-day comment period and have our public hearing on that day and adopt the ordinance, which would allow folks to start thinking about building and opening up those daycares that will accommodate more than twelve adults and or children. There's a great need for that. And I think that the Hacks Committee, Ms. Morton, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and Mr. Walters could add a bit of information about that need as well. So with that, if either of them have anything they'd like to say, I'd be happy to turn it over to you.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
We have, we have a couple of other participants on the Zoom call here today who can also speak to the substantial need in the community. Mr. Miesmer can talk to the projects we have out there, ready to go. One of those is the Family Center project. They broke ground on their new building, but they don't have a permit to operate childcare yet. The conditional use permit process, I, I really think, is not a very good opportunity to decide whether you want to have a type of use in a zone or not. That is the, the time of legislative adoption of the zone. It is a process to impose conditions. And the conditional use permit process for this type of use seems to me unlikely to yield a whole lot of value to the city in terms of conditions. We need to weigh in terms of what the city gets from the process, the costs of imposing those conditions, and the cost of imposing the process. So the additional cost of going through that process is money, it's time, it's uncertainty for the development, and when it's going to get permitted. Mr. Miesmer said four to six months. It could actually be much more than that, especially if you're dealing with an applicant who is not a developer, but is a, a childcare operator. And that can reduce the likelihood that you get the investment that you might need to start up these facilities. And we have this really substantial need. We're coming out of the pandemic. We're unable to get a lot of workers for a lot of businesses. Some people say, you know, that's related to availability of unemployment. But another big factor is the unavailability of childcare. And we've lost providers in Anacortes during the pandemic, including adult daycare. We need to get those back, and we need to get them back as quickly as possible to get the rest of our economy back on its speed. And overall, we have moved our development code away from conditional uses and toward prescriptive standards. We have so many more standards in the code to make it easier to get through the process, to get to permits. So I would really urge the city to find in favor of getting these projects in the pipeline so that they can get to the building permit. They would still require a building permit, but this year-long potentially process of a conditional use permit would be bypassed. And then they could proceed with all the other licensing requirements from the state level that they'd have to get anyway. But we have Nicole Mortimer on the phone. Christine Cleland McGrath has some personal experience in this area, very recent. And we also have Eric Johnson, who has been working this issue with the Synergy Group in town for quite a while, pre-pandemic even, but also now. So I would invite comments from them as to the severity of the need here in, in town.
Thank you, Ryan. Anything else before I turn you over to the audience?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young.
Um, you know, I guess I am supportive of, you know, daycare centers. I recognize it's a huge need for it and, you know, just, I don't believe many of us have a question pertaining to that. My only concern is, and I'm hoping that you guys could speak to this process, is that, is that in the selection of where some communities or some neighborhoods, I want to make sure that they have a voice in deciding if this is applicable for them in their neighborhood or in their block of the street. I think that's, I want to make sure that that process allows that type of public discussion. As for the Family Center project, I absolutely am very much in support of that. But I wanted to make sure that we don't create a blanket opportunity that we don't have a chance in the community, doesn't have a chance to sort of figure out if it's a fit for that particular neighborhood. And so that would be my only concern. If you can address that, I'm all in. But that will be something that I think we should discuss.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, just quickly, I guess we should point out that this would only affect the R four zone. And so for example, the Family Center project is not only in the R four zone, but in the medical use overlay zone, where there are much more intense uses allowed by right without a conditional use permit process. Also, I'd point out that the conditional use permit process itself doesn't provide for a neighborhood to choose whether a use can go into the neighborhood. It just imposes conditions on the use.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yeah, I, I will talk a little bit to that. You know, starting with, it's actually the, the kids or the, the small children who are going to, who are in desperate need of this type of facility. You know, this is about their social, social and emotional development. It's about safety because if there aren't licensed, responsible daycares available to folks in our, for kids in our community, they have to look at alternative methods, which may be either illegal or not as safe as other options. So it's a really a desperate need, not only for kids, but then for families. You know, getting people back to work, this is one of those kind of unspoken or untold or kind of ignored aspects when we talk about affordability and inclusivity of, of a variety of ages within our community. Either it's, if it's young children that need daycare or it's older family members who need daycare, it puts an additional strain on the affordability of folks living in our community. Whether it's having to go to the east side of the county for those, that type of daycare or staying at home because it is, can add up to essentially a second mortgage when you start to look at one, one student at, you know, a thousand dollars a month, or you have two kids that are pre-K. It can be two thousand dollars a month fairly quickly. And that's limited to reasonable hours. So hitting, kind of talking about that R four zone, I mean, the, but kids going to daycare, it's a pretty reasonable time period. You know, it's drop-offs and pickups are usually about the time that the regular day is. So there's not a lot of late nights or loud, loud things going on. I think the R four zone, at least to begin and do this, this initial measure, makes sense. Moving outside of the R four zone, you know, my kids go to a, go to daycare in Old Town that's been there forever. They are part of the community. They go to the playground, they go to the local beach, they go to the library. And I think it teaches them to be really good citizens. But that's kind of getting off topic. So I guess my, my, I am in support of it because even just doing this R four zone quickly for a couple of potential projects that are coming online are really important. And I would like to hope that this is an encouraging opportunity for other potential daycare providers, both for adults or for young kids. You know, the margins are, margins are slim when it comes to these kinds of businesses. So whatever we can do to kind of support all aspects of our community and our, and our citizens is really important.
Thank you, Christine. So why don't we open it up for public comment this time? Yes, Walter, go ahead. Turn your mic on. There you go.
Yeah, this is Walt Guterbach. I also speak for my wife, Susan. We're at two thousand and five twenty-ninth place in Anacortes. And we are, for the exposure, we're active supporters of the Family Center. But the need for childcare, affordable childcare in our community is really obvious. It, it, it just isn't here. It's a real obstacle to people going to work, getting back to work, single moms getting to work. And I think the conditional use permit process, one of our goals when we wrote the twenty sixteen plan was to reduce the number of uses that required a CUP. It's a very onerous process that really adds a lot of uncertainty and expense to any project, as Ryan said. So I think in the R four zone, it would be an acceptable use. There might be some traffic impacts, but some of those can be addressed in the design of the building and the pickup and drop-off lanes and so forth. So we strongly support this change, not just for the Family Center, but also for future development of childcare facilities and affordable childcare facilities in Anacortes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to talk to us? Raise your hand, I'll call on you. Brian, oh, Eric Johnson, welcome. Your mics, you need to turn your mic on, Eric.
Yeah. I'd like to ask Nicole Mortimer to speak first because she was one of the prophetic Yeah, I'd like to ask Nicole Mortimer to speak first because she was one of the prophetic voices that led the service clubs, which I represent at this meeting, to make the decision we did about infant care and childcare.
Okay, so welcome, Nicole.
And I will follow her.
Hi.
Hi.
I would put my video on, but I don't know how. Does it not work that way? Anyway, I don't.
I think we can do that. Hold on. You there still? No, I don't see you at all.
All right, well, at least I can unmute, but I do have a voice, right?
Yep.
Well, I am Nicole Mortimer and I am here in this moment to speak on a couple of, with a couple of different hats on, several hats I should say. Mainly it's as a mom and as a citizen who's concerned about issues in our community, namely childcare, but also our economy and also the flight of our families from Anacortes to other areas because they can't continue to stay here to live and to work. So I, do I need to say my address? I can.
No, just go ahead.
All right. Anyway, I'm not representing the school district. However, y'all know that I do work for the school district. I wear multiple hats. I'm the early learning coordinator, which is how I have come to know the desperate need in our community for childcare. I also am the McKinney Vento liaison and foster care liaison, which means that I am supporting families here in town, connecting them with supports and services who are experiencing homelessness, who are in our school district. And the definition of homelessness, as per the federal act, which is called Vento, is, is quite a bit different than what the family center defines homelessness. They have a category that they need to serve by, as per their funding, and it's pretty extreme. It's basically you're on the streets, you actually have no shelter other than possibly your car, and that might be it. For the school district, McKinney Vento, which like I said, is a federal act, means that you are not in control of your housing situation, which could mean a number of different things, and I could go on to ignazium describing that. But essentially, it basically means that you are experiencing homelessness. But it may not be the guy that's on the curb, you know, that we might imagine when we say homeless. It could be a family who's couch surfing and they don't, they are not, you know, so to speak, driving the bus on where they land that night or for how long they will be able to live in that space. So they're, they're at the mercy of whoever is allowing them to stay on. And we have lots of families, particularly during COVID, who have been experiencing homelessness that you would not expect at all. These are working families, families who have one to two incomes in the household and they are having to move because the housing prices have gone up to such a degree that they are now, you know, they were maybe occupying the mother-in-law unit or the lower half or a room or a space or, and now the landlord of that space is selling the property. Maybe they were staying with others who had the lease and they are now losing their house and therefore, you know, the, the kind of couch surfing and/or add-on arrangement has, has been extinguished for them. So I have been working with a number of families over the last year who have had to leave Anacortes. And I won't get into the whole affordable housing, but all of this is so very connected because if we can't have, if we can't have our families have access to childcare and they can't afford housing, then we are losing all of our families. And that is so very detrimental to our community as a community. We are not a resort. We're not an island that people come to to work, that come to, to, to stay on vacation eternally. We are an entire community of all ages and we want to keep it that way. We want to be able to serve all of our families. And as it is now, we have losses, Ryan was indicating, we have lost a number of family providers because they've not been able to survive the, when I say family providers, I mean, they're the small scale licensed childcare providers. We've lost one or two of them during COVID because of the different health issues and all of that kind of stuff that they couldn't actually, the families didn't feel safe or the families lost their jobs, they couldn't pay for childcare. And it goes on and on and on. It's just a row of dominoes in every direction for our families with young children. So I mean, the, anything that we can do with appreciation to what Anthony was saying and what Christine was saying and Ryan also acknowledging the R4, yes. You know, and making sure that we have community buy-in on where these things are happening. But also, we want to, we want to open the doors to allow this opportunity to be available to our families so that they can put their kids in childcare if they need to and so they can go to work so that we can keep our families in our community so we can continue to run all of our community as it is. I mean, the way that we want to see ourselves, it's imperative that we make sure that these places are in, in line for them to access when their, when their turn comes. And on top of that, I wanted to, to add the family center, I'm so excited to know about the recent developments that we have in increasing access to affordable licensed childcare that's full day in our community through what family center will be opening here soon with partnership and Boys and Girls Club and also with the expansion that Head Start has been rolling out as a result of our community partnerships with the synergy group. However, I, it's so limited, it is so limited, it doesn't even skim the surface of what the actual need is. Family Center, and I'm not saying anything negative, I'm just saying simply there's a limitation to it. They're serving ages three to school age and are, we are serving at any given moment in a licensed childcare affordable, full-day setting, zero to five children under the age of 12 months. And I can tell you that we don't want to close the door on, on these families who have just given birth to, you know, within a few months. And we might think it's ideal for the mom to be able to stay home, but that's not a financial ability for all families. And we don't want to close the door on those families to be able to stay here or to come here or to remain here. So I guess that's stay and remain same. But it is really, it's, it's really a critical need that we need to make sure is always provided and protected for our families or we will lose them and we are losing them as, as the affordability for housing is escaping us as employment is going, as childcare is going, it's, it's all just, it's, it's going, it's bleeding. And I can see it through all the different hats that I wear in the district, although I'm not representing the district in this moment.
Thank you, Nicole. That was a really good overview of what's going on in our town. Eric, do you want to follow up on that?
I, I do. Am I, there we go. Oh, so thanks, Eric, here are the city council members. I just want to talk. Yep, yep. I just want to talk briefly about the service clubs in town and their relationship to this resolution offered by Mr. Walters and the Hacks Committee. All the service clubs in town, that's two corners at the time, two rotary, two super optimists and then the Red Door and the Thrift Shop banded together to make a more unified effort as we turn our attention to this issue of childcare and infant care. This unified effort is something that being service clubs have never done in the past. Each club only had a limited idea of what the other clubs were doing and who they were supporting and we all live their own stovepipes donating our money in our own ways.
Nick?
So with that in mind, I ask the, excuse me, the service clubs and representatives of group.
Eric, sorry to interrupt you, my friend. You were fading in and out and I was trying to absorb everything that you were saying. So I was wondering if it was your microphone or something that you could adjust. If not, please go ahead. I'm able to extrapolate some of what you're saying. Thank you.
I think it's, yeah, if we could only get city fiber out here to the west end, I would have a lot better luck. I'm working on brand X right now.
Go slowly and we'll listen closely.
That's what it's kind of, it's kind of scratchy. I'll go slowly. So all of our service clubs, as I noted, had our own stovepipes and we didn't know what each other was doing. And so I asked the service clubs and center representative and the Red Door to a group of it think about how we might develop some synergy and the way we donate our money. And then to find that one big issue in the way they can make the greatest impact in changing the trajectory of people's lives. And that's how we started the Synergy Project in mid-2017. And the first trajectory-changing issue was early learning and infant care. And there were two prophetic voices who pointed us in this direction, Chief Bonnie Bowers and Nicole Mortimer. Chief Bowers informed us that there was one major consistent factor that determined if a young person or adult is going to be involved with the criminal justice system in a bad way. All you had to do is answer the question, when that child was in the third grade, did that child read at the third grade level? And two or three children that can't read at grade level at third grade will either end up in welfare or in jail or both. And there are states who predict their future prison population based on third grade literacy scores. And children who arrive at the first grade without the benefit of the foundation for learning provided in preschool often find themselves are great behind their peers. The second prophet, prophetic voice, was Nicole Mortimer, who explained how we in Anacortes lived in a childcare desert. And you've seen some of those figures in the package you got for this evening's discussion. And this lack of infants and childcare was among the greatest barriers for young families in finding a job and keeping those jobs and living in Anacortes, as Nicole noted. So over time, then we asked the sandwich nation, the tribal administrator Kimberly Anderson, how we might help in their efforts in providing infant care in an expanded sandwich longhouse. And that effort is now being undertaken as a team effort that is called the D Avenue Nursery. So I'd just like to thank Mr. Walters, in particular, as well as Mr. Meesmer and the Hacks Committee for taking this proactive effort to enable us to provide enough childcare in our city. By approving this ordinance, not only will you remove some of the barriers that preclude young families from holding jobs and living in our city, who have laid the foundation for changing their trajectory of children's lives in Anacortes. And thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay.
Not entirely. Sure.
Are you, are you finished, Eric? Okay, John, you want to?
I am indeed. Hard to tell.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so we have this ordinance in front of us, John, and next steps.
Thank you, Mayor. So next steps is that we'll be coming back on July 12th with a public hearing to approve the ordinance 3091. After that, we'll come back with a resolution adopting a work plan and then get it moved to the planning commission to start working out the details and specific standards that would apply to a daycare, daycare two in the R4 use zone. So for this evening, it sounds like we've gotten some good public comment. I really appreciate all the comment that has been given us. It will help us move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
No, I just wanted to say one additional thing. I am totally in support and I really appreciate the conversations from, you know, Mr. Walters, Ms. Mortimer, Ms. Cleland McGrath. Because truly, we do have a shortage, a great shortage here that needed. The only thing that I was concerned about, because I'm supportive of the project and will likely vote for this, is that I just wanted to always make sure that the public and the community has some say of buy-in. And if we can do that, I'm extraordinarily happy. And that's really the purpose of my conversation prior. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young.
Well, you know what? I wanted to make sure that Mr. Young's point, prior point was, was heard. Because it's really important in this process, there, I don't think anybody on council disagrees that there's not an issue. This issue is in just about every, every, every community anywhere. And I'm very excited that we were trying to address this before COVID and other communities, you know, it's just blown up after COVID to get people back to work. So it's a real challenge, but we do have a role to make sure we protect neighborhoods. And just because we're jumping on an emergency action, some of the things I'd like the staff to maybe look at, always unintended consequences, but is there an opportunity for a daycare three? Because what is, what is the limit? You know, is it 100? Can you have 100 in a daycare? And if I went to a neighborhood that wasn't near the family center, would that be okay? Again, just, just make sure we've looked at the, I'm fully supportive of this, this program. But we've got to, we've got to do a little bit of work. We have time to take it out of the conditional use process and make sure the unintended consequences are potentially, again, like Mr. Young brought up at the beginning of this, we aren't surprising some neighbors in other parts of the R4.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Walton.
Thank you. I would just like to draw our attention to one of the wheres in this interim ordinance, which states before the pandemic, only 12% of the 1,000 children in Anacortes under school age had access to full-time licensed childcare. Less than half of the Washington state average of 27%. So we have a very, very severe problem here and we have an interim ordinance in front of us that's for six months. And so because of the urgency of this, I would like to see this proceed. And because it's a six-month ordinance for this emergency, then we can sort of revisit as we go along too. So we're not making a permanent change here, but again, urgent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Gear? And, and as we kind of study this, the interim ordinance, I think it would also be good to, you know, in the near future, look at other areas of town or other zones and kind of gather some feedback from either existing childcare providers or preschool providers so that we have a better understanding of how, kind of what structures are in place and how they're successful or less successful when it comes to the neighborhoods in which they exist.
Thank you.
Eric Gear?
Okay, yes, Mr. Walters?
Yeah, it would be too bad if, when we come to the work plan, if we focus too narrowly. Because it should be our goal to make this more available throughout the city. You need neighborhood childcare providers. I don't know that there's anything magical about the number 12 that moves it from a permitted use to a conditional use. And with some additional parameters, I think we could make it fit as a permitted use in, in all the neighborhoods in town. That'll require more work. It's just as an interim ordinance where we know we've got two providers ready to go. We need to move it forward now in this one zone.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
I just wanted to lend my support to what Ms. Walton and Ms. Christine McGrath, or Ms. McGrath said, as well as Mr. Walters. I'm ready to move forward as soon as possible on the interim ordinance.
Well, we'll get this back to you on July 12th and then take action. All right, so at this time, I'm going to move on to item 6B, Resolution 3038, Extending duration of Resolution 2082, Providing temporary procedures to respond to the COVID-19 epidemic. This is a session of possible action this evening. Mr. Hoadle?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and members of the audience. We took a brief look at this last Monday, Resolution 3038, extending the provisions of the original COVID response resolution, which was Resolution 2082. So the first thing I wanted to point out is that I did not correct the date in this version included, the updated version included in your packet. I apologize. Apologize for that. So the intent was to extend, there we go. The intent was to extend this to September 30th, not December 31st, 2021. So I apologize. Somebody made the recommendation last week of doing a track changes in the original version and that was included in your packet. Happy to discuss that, that further. But in the resolution extending the COVID provisions, the, the sections that are left. But in the resolution extending the COVID provisions, the, the sections that are left that are continued to be effective are section one, which is essentially the section that identifies that there is a COVID crisis. Section 2A is still effective, and that's the identifying that the city will do what they can to follow state and county health department guidelines to keep, you know, staff and communities safe. So that is still effective in this version. Section 2A, section 3A regarding council procedures. This is the, the section that identified all council members could attend remotely. I wanted to point out this section right here, all city council members are encouraged to attend all meetings via telephone, not required, but encouraged. Part of that, I know council, mayor and council were interested in a hybrid meeting model where, whereby we could have attendees both in person and remotely. And we believe we have the infrastructure in place to support that now, and there's a test meeting on Wednesday to verify that. Section 3D is still effective. Any council rules inconsistent with this resolution are hereby waived and suspended during the term of this resolution. The budget section, section 4B is still effective. Actually, section 4A is still effective. However, it's not effective within the resolution. The hiring freeze was adopted as part of the budget ordinance when the budget was, the 2021 was adopted last year. So section 4B is still effective, non-essential equipment replacement, replacements are suspended. And section 6A is still effective. Updates regarding city functions and actions related to COVID-19 will be posted on the city's website. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have, or if you need a little more information or details on any of this.
Mayor Gear?
I'm Mr. Walters.
4B, is it really our intent to leave that suspended? That's the non-essential equipment replacements? I mean, we're sort of back to a normal budget condition. It, does council at this time care about suspending non-essential equipment replacements, or should we return to our normal schedule of that? Steve, were you suggesting that we leave that in place because we haven't fully funded ERNR?
So that's, yeah, there's part of me that, that is still not ready to, I guess, to let go of some of these, you know, restraints that we've put on the budget. Because we're starting to see signs that things are recovering, but we still are not at, you know, our sales taxes recovered, lodging taxes seem to have recovered, but we still have other elements of our budget that are still a little bit tenuous. So it was, my thinking was to leave that there just to ensure our departments were continuing to scrutinize every purchase that was made. And, and really, our definition of equipment is over $5,000 with at least a two-year useful life. So it's still for significant purchases that, that would require that additional approval by council.
And then I guess my final question is on section five, plastic bag ban. Are we confident that the state law preempts our existing ordinance all by its own? Did somebody look that up?
I, sorry, I, so Ms. Swett and I worked together on this. I, I guess I, I can't answer that with 100% certainty, because I don't remember having that specific conversation. But we did work together in this, in eliminating that section. So I kind of took some of that for granted that, that it was. But I would be happy to circle back on that and make sure that there's not something, you know, still lingering in our code or someplace that, that would provide a conflict with this.
It was my, it was my understanding that we were not preempted so long as we adopted a pass-through charge of 10 cents, which I thought is what we did. I don't want there to be a bunch of confusion on this point, like I want us to just follow the state law now at this point. So I advocated adopting a new ordinance, repealing that and reverting us to the state law, which we ought to do anyway, even if we are preempted.
Yeah, yeah, no, good, good point. So I guess I'm, if there's, so if we have section of code that needs to get cleaned up, that we can, we can bring an ordinance back. That's a loud one. We can bring an ordinance back for that. But can we, I guess I'm asking, can we still adopt this section of the resolution? And then bring back an ordinance later to make sure that that's taken care of?
Next week?
If, possibly. Darcy's out of the office for about a week. I guess I'd feel more comfortable having her review the ordinance before it comes back to council, if that's okay. Okay, so, yeah, we'll do that for sure.
So are we going to wait then, does she can review and look at that, or separate the plastic bag out?
Yeah, so if council can adopt this resolution tonight, and then we'll bring back an ordinance in a week or two.
Could, could we just insert section five is also still in effect? So that suspension of the bag ban is still in effect, just, just by adding it to your list?
Yeah, absolutely.
And there would be no, you know, interruption in that suspension.
Sure, yeah. Okay, good idea.
They had none out.
Yeah. Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young.
Section three, number, letter A. City council meetings are temporarily suspended. City council are encouraged to attend all meetings via telephone. I'm just asking the question out loud, is that what we still want in there? And if so, why? I, I'm planning on attending in person next week. I'm just curious what the rest of the council is, is planning on doing. I get it, it's easier to attend by telephone.
Well, we're set up. We know that we have the technology based on a dress rehearsal on Wednesday. And I don't, I don't know what everyone's.
I'm neutral on leaving the language in there, but I just think it's maybe time we set the example one way or another.
Mayor Gear? I'm planning on attending in person as well, but I do like the option to be able to attend remotely as, you know, work stuff sometimes can interfere. Would it maybe be okay to alter the language and just cross off the, the part about council members encouraged to attend meetings via telephone? And just be entirely neutral on the point?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters.
I like Mr. McDougal's suggestion. It should be fairly easy to implement, just delete after suspended. I am looking forward to seeing this in action, though.
So am I.
So if I may.
Technical problems during this meeting.
Well, I don't think that was our issue here.
Mayor Gear? If I may, I just wanted to clarify. So section 3A, you suggesting, like, from this point on to delete that last section of?
Yeah, yeah, just modify 3A to remove that last phrase.
Okay.
Beginning with and all city.
Second.
Great.
Want that? Okay.
So we'll remove that last section of 3A. We put section five back in and then adjust the date to September 30th, 2021. Okay, great.
Mayor Gear? As far as 6, 3B, we're basically crossing off the, the city council committees being, being done telephonically or done remotely, or at least that they're temporarily suspended. Are we saying we're returning to pre-pandemic where council committee meetings are done onsite always? Or, or can we have, maybe this doesn't have to be solved tonight, but a discussion about like hybrid model for council committee meetings as well?
That, that, I recommend that. That seems to work really well in our town.
Yep.
Really, it's been better, I think, than it used to be, with everyone can get there.
So maybe, maybe we don't need an ordinance or anything to establish that, that just can be something that we do as council committees. It would be good, though, that we have like a standing teams or Zoom meeting per committee. That way, public could also participate in a hybrid manner.
Sorry, Mayor Gear. I was, I was just looking at the section on council committees in the council procedures. My, my thinking was initially that if we remove that section from this resolution, that would, then our policies would just be silent on the issue, and we could go to that hybrid model if council members desired.
Yeah, works for me.
He says we had lots.
So, Mayor Gear?
Walters.
Do we have new tech to support hybrid council committee meetings?
Today, we had a company in, and they are confident that we are ready to go. And we are going to do a rehearsal on Wednesday, so we are confident. We're ready to go.
I think that's for the actual city council meeting on Monday. Yeah, that doesn't cover committee meetings.
No, but I, has there been an issue with the committee meeting?
Well, well, no. I mean, the point is, we haven't had a hybrid committee meeting.
I see.
So if we have a Teams room phone or a Surface Hub or something like that, we could easily facilitate those. But in the absence of that, are we all going to gather around a tablet?
I'm going to give you more work on that.
Yeah, and we do have, like, the main, the main conference room is set up where we could do a hybrid format. It might be a little, a little tighter, but I have a large screen in my office, for example. So finance committee, I could accommodate one or two council members with somebody else calling in. It's, I think we could get there with.
I think we're close.
Yeah.
But that's already probably will make it, we'll get there quickly. So what is your, where are we at on this Resolution 3038? Does anyone want to summarize what actually we want to pick tonight?
Mayor Gear? I move that we approve the resolution as presented with the following changes. One, add section five to the list of provisions remaining in effect. And two, modify section 3A so that it ends after the word suspended.
And revise the date to September 30th.
The effect shall remain in effect until, yeah, in the first sentence. So that's a third change.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters with three changes, and second by Mr. McDougal. Are there any additions or questions? Ms. How would you take the vote on Resolution 3038 pro quo?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
We have an IT committee meeting scheduled for two days from now, Wednesday. And there are a lot of topics on the agenda, but having the tech set up for these meetings, I think, is really important. Can we talk about that then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. All right, so we're going to go on to item 6C, Resolution 3040, Contract 21-138-001. This is our work for Fidelgo Avenue Emergency Repairs. This is a discussion on action item, and Mr. Beckamire, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A little bit of background on this one. If you remember back in, when was it, February of last year, there was a disaster declaration, and we experienced a failed stormwater pipe at the, at both Fidelgo and Longview avenues. The FEMA staff came out and they, they reimbursed us for the Longview Avenue work, but not, not for the Fidelgo. They said that was an existing condition that was made worse by the storm and not created by the storm. And they weren't wrong in that analysis of that. So, but the condition, the condition continues to worsen. There is surface settling, as you can see by the photos included in the packet, surface settling on private property adjacent to the location that we want to do the stormwater improvement on. We, so we're asking the city council to declare, to declare an emergency that would allow us to get to work on this and immediately fix the issue before the rainy season starts, if you will.
Right. Also, any questions?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I see we've got to do a budget amendment for this one, is, I think that's correct. Can you, since I don't have the bars numbers memorized yet, can you tell me what the funding source is going to be?
The bulk of this is going to come out of our stormwater fund, but because there is a considerable amount of asphalt and street work that's going to be, you know, basically destroyed, we're going to, we're going to take our overlay, or excuse me, our water fund and to fund a little bit of it, because there's a water line replacement that, water line replacement in that section of the street also.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, let's, let's get on it. I move approval of the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters, and second by Mr. Miller. Any additional comments? Ms. How would you call for a vote on this Resolution 3040 pro quo?
Give me, Mr. Walters, your motion also includes the contract as well?
Sure does.
Thank you. Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, so our final item this evening, item 6B is Resolution 3041. De declaring an emergency in Wayne State compared with bidding requirements for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite. This is special possible action. Will you agree with this, or is this for you, Mr. Beckamire?
I'm thinking Brian is going to weigh in on this one. Is that true, Brian? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm not in the best of conditions to report, but yeah, I can weigh in as needed to support the motion.
Okay, I'll stay on to also. So just a brief explanation, when it's sort of self-explanatory, the, our supplier declared a force majeure, which means they don't, all the elements of the contract are gone. So we're just asking for the ability to continue to buy sodium hypochlorite and from this supplier with, basically without, without a contract, just at market price.
Do you see that changing in the future?
Yeah, absolutely. I think once there's a, you know, a kind of a guaranteed supply chain out there, we would be willing to, or they would be willing to, you know, re-enter into negotiated contracts. But until then, I'm quite, quite honestly, if I was them, I'd be doing this exact same thing. You have no guarantee on what your cost will be and can't guarantee what the sale price would be to someone else.
Thank you.
Mr. Young?
No, basically, we have no choice, do we? I mean, really, right now, we're in desperate position, and whether you, whether there are other terms used for that particularly, of that particular business style. But I hear you, and I'm not sure if there's any. used for that particularly, of that particular business style. But I hear you and I'm not sure if there's anything we can do. We need it. We've got a source, so I'm prepared to move forward.
And we're in good company. There's, everybody else is in the same place we are, so.
Mayor Gear? Yeah, I would just thank the, our local partners for helping us kind of refill our supply. And then if there's any way we can just kind of continue to have a little bit more cushion when it comes to our supplies when we, so that if something happens like this again, we, we've got a little bit more time on our hands. Thank goodness it, it worked out as it did, especially with this heat wave. So thank you guys for working hard and and our community partners for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
Why? What was, what's your pleasure this evening?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I move that the Resolution 3040 be approved, declaring an emergency and waiving state competitive bidding requirements for, wait, that's the wrong one, right?
No.
No, that's the right one. Okay, for the repair.
No, item B.
Yeah, so I, I move that we approve this offer by Mr. Buckamire. And fill in the words if you won't mind.
Resolution 3041, motion by Mr. Young.
Second.
Second by Mr. McDougal. Is there any additional comments? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote for Resolution 3041 for approval?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Try to stay cool the rest of the evening. I didn't mention at the beginning of the meeting today, but we did open up the library, the new, the Heritage Center and the Senior Center as a place for the public to come and cool off this afternoon. And we had several residents. The fire department also went out to Washington Park and did a little fire hose action. So a lot of families were able to cool off. So we stepped in and we hope that we're going to have a break tomorrow. But we'll continue to monitor that situation and keep the community as cool as we can. All right. Thank you all and have a good evening. Goodbye.